Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring the March 20th, 2019 meeting of the Interboro Board and School Directors to order. Ms. Caldwell, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Fagan, here. Ms. Alonso, here. Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Muricio, here. Ms. Joseph, here. Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Felts?
Here. Mr. Evans, can we have the invocation on the question?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant that this board, in their deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace. And what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name. Amen. Let's lead.
Let's lead. The United States of America, and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Keeney, you by yourself today?
Yes, I am not.
You're up, sir.
Okay. We're gonna start off with the kindergarten academy. February was an exciting month for the students at the kindergarten academy. We started the month with the 100th Day of School. Celebrated Black History Month and President's Day, as well as having Valentine celebrations in the classrooms. We also celebrated Read Across America Week with different events each day, which helped get all the children excited about reading. Glen Olin School. February 14th was not just Valentine's Day at Glen Olin School. They also celebrated Crazy Hair/Advent. Student Council still loved Graeme's during all lunches. In the afternoon, many places celebrated Valentine's Day with their friends. Glen Olin is definitely a school with a big heart. The second graders were very busy in February. On Thursday, February 21st, the lobby of Glen Olin was turned into a living history museum. The students researched a famous person of their choosing and then dressed like their person for others to interview them. They loved all the attention they received and really did a great job portraying their person. The following day, they took a trip to the Franklin Credit Union to visit their country. They role-played the various jobs performed in the bank. Friday, February 22nd, was a fun-filled day for Glen Olin. The day began with recognizing the honest and trustworthy students of the month. The students received their awards and then enjoyed a snack with their family in the library. Later, family bingo night was a huge success. Almost 200 people came out. Students were excited to win various prizes. Some even won lunch with the principal. Teachers donated baskets to be raffled off. The baskets raised over $1,000 to be donated to Olin School. Even though the eighth grade students were tired from a late night of bingo, they still managed to wake up early and serve breakfast to their friends and families at Applebee's on March 23rd. Glen Olin School sure knows how to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday. On March 1st, Ms. Lonergan kicked off Read Across America Week by inviting Ms. Lambert to come into her class and read one of her favorite books. The second and seventh grade reading buddies' red stories together in the lobby. Students in sixth through eighth grade received training on the Safe to Save Program. Students received information on how to download the app on their smartphone devices and how to make an anonymous tip if needed. Thank you to all who supported Glen Olin's book fair. Students were lined up outside the school on Wednesday, March 6th at 7:30 in the morning. They could not wait to celebrate National Breakfast Weekend. Glen Olin had their dodgeball tournament and brought it back to Glen Olin. They did a great job. This is Nord School. February 22nd was movie night. Here at Nord School, the movie "Adeline" ran from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Olin School sold candy, popcorn, and bottled water in the lobby. Students and their families had a great time. On Friday, March 1st, was Dr. Seuss's birthday and also a celebration of Read Across America. Nord Elementary students celebrated with our snuggling up-to-read assemblies from 1:45 to 2:15 p.m. Students were encouraged to bring their favorite book and a beach towel to school with them. Grades 1 through 2 were in the cafeteria with Ms. Cabito. And grades 3, 4, and 5 were in the gym with Mr. Mills. On March 2nd, Nord Olin School held its annual Ladies and Lads Night. It was held at Top Lumber Academy in Holmes, PA. It was a huge success. Teachers, parents, and students had a wonderful time. Prospect Park. February, our eighth grade students visited the National Holocaust Museum in Washington, DC. Our eighth graders also visited the high school for an activities collective fair in preparation for course selection for their freshman year. Our middle school students were rewarded for their positive, productive, and proud behavior with a "You Picket" Activity Day. Thanks to a grant provided by the Franklin McFederal Credit Union for the efforts of our reading specialist, Ms. Race Vita, our students were treated to three visits from therapy dogs as pails for life came to Prospect. During their visits, our students were able to play with the dogs and took turns reading to them in our library. This is Tinnicum School. Our annual Tinnicum Bingo Night was held on February 8th. The event was sold out and everyone had a great time. Thank you for supporting our Olin School. On February 22nd, we had our annual, our second Buckle Words Assembly. Students from elementary and middle school are rewarded for their actions displaying respect, responsibility, honesty, and pride. Students have one more chance to have these actions recognized at our latest assembly in May. On February 25th, our students enjoyed a day of bowling and lunch for their middle school rewards trip. A good time was had by all, including the teachers and assistants who went on the trip. This is the high school. The music department. Over the last month, the music department has had many performance opportunities. The jazz band has been participating in their jazz band festivals. On Friday, March 1st, the high school music department hosted their second coffee house in the library. There were 20 students performed. On March 11th, the high school select choir performed at Her Capital and met with legislatures about the importance of music in the schools. We are currently gearing up for the musical and hope to see everybody there. Guidance Department. The College and Career Fair was a successful night, with over 50 colleges, unions, businesses, and military representatives presenting themselves this year. They spoke highly about the students and families that they met during the event. We hope to continue to maintain and create those secondary plans.
Thank you, Mr. Keeney. Good job. Thank you. Moving on to number three, recognition, district spelling bee, Mr. Aron.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. At this time, I'd like to invite up Ms. Jen Oliveri, who is our spelling bee coordinator for Norwood, to present and speak on our spelling bee winners for our middle school students.
Sure. Thank you. So, our district spelling bee was held February 23rd, and we were able to entertain or have 24 spellers, so six from each school. So, each student that was there was in the top six at their school, and then the top three are being honored here tonight. So, we have with us from Prospect School in third place, Michael Southern, who also placed last year. (applause) I'd also just like to recognize Isabella Shippe, also from Prospect Park in second place, and the first place winner, the Placey Cheetum from Norwood School. So, the big trophy is gonna go back to Norwood School where it was next year. Congratulations to all the kids. (applause)
Congratulations to three of them. Good job. Moving on to number four, public comments, Mr. Hearn.
Mr. Virgil Doby.
Yes. Over the past month, you've had, at your workshop meetings, and you've had announcements about executive sessions in which you stated that they were for negotiations. So, but you didn't work very specific. So, what's the status of the secretary's contract? Are they in a contract currently, or they, it hasn't expired already?
No, it has not expired, Mr. Doby. They're still in contract. We started negotiations a little early so that we could get it settled before their contract was out. And it's still in negotiations. But I mean, it's moving along. We're going back and forth for a couple of things.
And who is negotiating for the school board?
The school board is myself and Mr. Harris.
Sorry. And what about the, at the January meeting, you mentioned, or you passed a resolution to, with the intent to renew the superintendent's contract. What is the status of that?
That is also in negotiations. We're working on it. We're hoping to bring that to the table for sure.
And who is negotiating for the school board on?
For the superintendent. That is actually the whole board.
The whole board. So, to my representative, Ms. Fagan, since you're part of that, you need to settle this, and I don't know what the hang-up is, or what the snag is with regards to the superintendent or the secretaries. But you need to start at at least a 3% increase on the salary position for every year, both for the secretaries and for the superintendent. Just, is there an assistant superintendent for the Interboro School District?
No, sir, no.
No. So, one of the reasons why you should be entering into the contract with our current superintendent is that she's doing double duty. Before, several years ago, there used to be an assistant superintendent for the Interboro School District. Now-
Seven years, I think.
Pardon?
Seven years ago, I think.
Okay. So, in essence, our superintendent is doing more than what you've always required. Now, I don't know what, so I'm asking you to settle the contract with the superintendent. Since 2012, we've had four superintendents in the Interboro School District. As a result of the actions of the Board of School Directors, the simple majority comprised of Bill Taggart, Brian Razzie, Phyllis Floyd, you, Mr. Phelps, and Ed Murphy. When they decided that they were going to try and establish a patronage mill in the Interboro School District, with, starting in 2011, when Brian Razzie was given, was hired by Tinnicum Township as a hot alternate health officer. Now, that was a pledge by Tinnicum Township because they, he, I guess, in discussions with them, he was going to install or help to install solicitors for patronage reasons. And they needed to-
Is that fact, or is that your stuff?
No. But it's, it's what you can gather from what took place over the course of this year, starting in 2011. You targeted John Kaelin C. and to put in Ed Murphy, which you successfully did. And then, in December of 2011, you hired Francis G. X. Pelagi. And you also hired the law firm Rafael Pupio. Now, the existing, the solicitor at the time, the law firm, was Fox Rothschild and Jeffrey Sultani. Now, you did it so hastily at that December reorganization meeting that you forgot to do it, and you had to do it at the commission, at the regular meeting in December. You had to fire the law firm of Fox Rothschild because you didn't do it, because they were not turning over the files, because they had six months on their contract. Now, then you went after and targeted the superintendent at the time, Dr. Nancy Hacker. And you made her professional life here so difficult that she decided to resign. And she did so in June of 2012. And that's, those are some of the things that happened. And then, after that, you hired the former or the retired superintendent, Dr.-
We appreciate the history lesson. Where are you going with this, sir?
Well, I'm trying to say that you need to move forward and settle the contract and do it, do it with these secretaries and the superintendent as quickly as possible. And the reason, again, the reason is that when we had Dr. Hacker here, you made her life so difficult as a professional educator that she left. Dr. Seketti, who has retired from the Interboro School District in the 90s, was hired by either Mr. Taggart or Mr. Razzie. He was told certain things about the Interboro School District which were not true. And by November of 2012, he resigned. And then you hired Dr. Jung, I mean, Mr. Clayhorn, who was a retired assistant superintendent from the Ridley School District, with the intent of installing him as the superintendent. Now, that happened up until May of 2013. And a meeting was held at the Tinnicum Township School. And then, this Interboro School District makes the front page of the Daily Times in May 21st. And of all days, this was primary day, election day, for Delaware County. But we made it the front page of the Daily Times because of a gaffe, a vulgar gaffe made at the, at the, at the Interboro School Board meeting in May of 2013. Mr. Clayhorn had to resign quickly. And so, you had to look for a superintendent, and you asked Mrs. Riley if she would step in as the interim superintendent, which she did. And then, in September of 2013, she was hired on and commissioned as the superintendent. Now-
Mr. Doby.
Can I just finish?
No, sir. You can't.
Okay. I'll do it next time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, sir.
Just a point of clarification that I made. Board members that attend the negotiation sessions are only there as representatives of the board. They do not negotiate actively with the collective bargaining units. The negotiations are conducted by the school administration, by and between the school administration and the collective bargaining unit representatives. Board representatives are there only to carry back to the body as a whole what was discussed and what was brought forth at the negotiation session.
Thank you, Mr. Har-
You got it.
All right. Moving on to number five, Mr. Har-
Motion 5.1, that the volume is of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on February 20th, 2019, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. And next up, number six, is Solicitors Report. Ms. Goian.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. This month, our office has been consulting with the school district on special education matters and contract review. Very much so.
Thank you, Ms. Goian. And we want to number seven, financial, Mr. Evans.
Motion 7.1, attached treasurer's report for the month ending February 20th, 2019, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 9-0. And number eight, the eighth point, move.
Motion 7.2, that fund this person, total amount of $5,102,999.63, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 9-0. And next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 7.3, that the attached budget transfer in the fiscal year 2018, 2019, be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0. And now, of course, not yet.
There is no part of money.
Number nine, communal boards. Mr. Keeney, you can take that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 9.1, Mr. Shavon.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. The Finance Committee met on Monday, March 4th, 2019. The first item on the agenda was the preliminary budget for 2019, 2020. Overall, our budget saw an increase in its revenue by $936,974. The increase is mainly from state revenue through increases in basic education and special education funding per the proposed state budget. In terms of our expenditures, we actually saw an increase of $264,900. Most of the increases in expenditures were due to adjustments to health plans. This increase added $249,064 to expenditures. We also saw some increases in the People's Services Department for chargeable tuitions and special education line item for tuition for life skills and emotional support services totaling $97,124. The Transportation Department saw an increase of $54,220 for special education transportation, GPS software, and increases to repair and maintenance line items. Finally, there was an increase in the technology line item for various technology support services, as well as software for transportation totaling $44,088. Some of the reductions in expenditures included reducing the DCIU line item by $141,358 because of decreases in special education services, as well as fair share costs and various other IU services. We also reduced the salary benefit line item $56,998 due to resignations and reclassifications. Overall, we were able to decrease the deficit by $649,226. The current budget deficit sits at $672,074 at a 3% tax increase. As the tax increase goes down, the deficit increases. At a 0% tax increase, we're still sitting at a $1.9 million deficit. Mr. High School, Ms. Riley, and the board will continue to work this month to reduce deficits. We're waiting for the second look for healthcare, second look for prescription to adjust the benefit line item. We're also keeping an eye on the state budget. Ms. Muricio may mention the cyber charter reform that potentially is being talked out at state level that could potentially save us some money as well. We did see two departments present their budgets. Some of the highlights of the technology budget include potential new leases for 350 laptops, 1,000 Chromebooks, and desktops totaling $172,000. This would actually be an annual savings of $34,000 compared to the previous lease. We also discussed a few different plans for classroom interactive displays. Mrs. Hagerty discussed three options. We ask for more information, so Ms. Hagerty will come back at a future Finance Committee meeting to provide more, more updates on that. Some of the highlights of the facility budget included an overall reduction of $60,000 due to utility costs, being reduced utility costs and doing many projects in-house. Some of the increases to the facility budget include an increase in the line item for in-house projects, because we're doing so many more things in-house rather than subcontracting out. And there was also an increase to the aqua water rates of 18%. Some proposed projects that Mr. Gallaway presented were replacing French door classrooms, classroom doors, an upgrade to the fire system modem to cellular or an IP phone, and a Tinnicum gym were prepared, that could cost approximately $30,000. We'll have more department budgets next month. We also discussed the preliminary financial statements. There were no questions about those, and the committee adjourned. And our next finance meeting is April 1st at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
And 9.2, Mr. Doby.
Yes, in the month of March, there was no GBO meeting. We didn't have any pretty agenda, so that didn't take place. And we'll be having our GBO, next GBO meeting on April 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Doby. Moving on to 9.3, Ms. Muricio.
Yes, thank you. I attended the Legislative Council meeting on March 13th. Things were kind of quiet. It was basically just talking over two main bills that they were talking about, which is Senate Bill 34. They're just still asking everybody to contact their state senator to co-sponsor Senate Bill 34, which is the cyber charter bill, which would really school districts from paying cyber tuition to cyber charter schools if they offer a similar plan in-house. And Senator Kerry also attended this meeting on last Wednesday, and we would like to thank him as being one of the co-sponsors of this bill. And for anyone who doesn't know, Senate Bill 34 is, under the bill, if a district offers a cyber-based program equal in scope or content to an existing publicly, sorry, my reading was, my print is very fine. I guess I need better reading. Sorry. Excuse me. We'll start over. Under the bill, if a district offers a cyber-based program equal in scope and content to an existing publicly charter cyber school, and if a student in that district attends a cyber charter school instead of the district's cyber-based program, the district shall not be required to provide funding to pay for the student's attendance at the cyber charter school. And the other-
Could you repeat that?
Look how small the words are. Sorry. Okay, the other one that they touched on, which Mr. Feinberg at the legislative meeting spoke about, was House Bill 97, which is, they're talking about the sale of vaping products to minors. And this bill is being aimed at controlling the sale of vaping products to minors and their use on school property. And it's supposed to amend the criminal code to make it an offense to sell nicotine products and electronic nicotine delivery systems to minors, and for minors to purchase or attempt to purchase nicotine products or electronic devices. So, that's basically it. So, Muricio's posted on that. And the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Muricio. Moving on to 9.4, Mr. Doby.
Yes, there was no meeting for the Delaware County Community College. Our next, that was in January. Our next meeting is Wednesday, April 3rd at 6:30 p.m.
You're getting a lot of vacay time.
Yeah. Apparently, I picked the right committees to be on.
Moving on. 9.5, Delaware County Intermediate.
Is that going to have an extra time?
No.
No.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board met on March 6th. Applied for a DCIU early head start, head start continuation for funding for fiscal year. Contract with Vision Academy Charter School for the DCIU to provide special education and administrative support. A memorandum of understanding, an MOU, these acronyms, I should just say MOU, with Wagner University for internship field placement. Permission for 36 students and three adults to attend the Health Occupational Students of America Leadership State Conference. Also approve the 2019, 2020 Intermediate Unit General Operational Budget, also the special education budget, and the Delaware County Technical Schools budget. Also with regret, we accept the resignation of Mr. Charles Warren, who are representative for Chester Upland School District, and approve the appointment of Mr. Anthony- of Mr. Anthony Johnson for, to fulfill to his term. The next DCIU board meeting will be April 3rd, 2019. For more news and information, go to DCIU.org. That is all I have. How do you think?
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Moving on to nine point six, community average, Ms. Alonso.
Um, yes, hi. The only thing I have is the flag is for Memorial Day. We will have a meeting here on March 29th. People that will be involved in setting up for students to assist veterans in placing flags on the graves of the cemetery. The VFW has currently came up with the dates of Wednesday, May 15th, with a rain date of May 22nd. And it'll be the Norwood VFW post 7230. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Alonso. Okay, moving on.
From the Office of Personnel, motion 10.1 to 10.11, starting on page two and ending on page six, the following personnel, personnel action.
Second.
Movements have been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. And next motion, Mr. Evans.
Still from the Office of Personnel, under retirement, motion 11.1 to 11.3, Suzanne Ernest, kindergarten teacher, returned four years of service. Linda Nace, library assistant at Tentacle School with 30 years of service. And Gladys Fontes Cristiano, math hire professional at Clinton Olden School with 11 years of service.
Second.
Movements have been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Myself, I would like to thank these three employees for the dedication that they have given us over these so many years, 34 years, I can't even imagine. That's, that's a lifetime almost in a JHAD position. But we do appreciate it. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion 12.1 to 12.3.
Second.
Movements have been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 13, Office, from the Office of Special Education and People's Services, motion that the following items be approved, 13.1 to 13.8.
Second.
Movements have been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I just want to make a quick comment.
Yes.
When the public looks at some of the agenda items on there and they see students with numbers go to outside placements and things, I just want to point out, that's why it's difficult for the special education and the people services budget, you know, when we're budgeting, that money is increasing exponentially because we have this requirement to educate these students, then it's hard to fine tune that when students come into the district and we have the obligation to pay for them. So, we can't, yeah, we can't predict, and we try to give the special education people services department some leeway in their budget. So, those, those figures are budgeted forward. I just wanted to, I'd like to clarify that. Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. And next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 14 is a roll call motion that the board of school directors for the general operating budget of Delaware County Intermediate Unit for fiscal year July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, in the amount of $9,343,629. Interbar School District share is $37,679.88.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Goldblow, will we have a vote for her?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. And next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 15 is a roll call motion as well, that the board of school directors approve the general operating budget of the Delaware County Area Vocational Technical School for the fiscal year July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, in the amount of $14,202 by officers. Interbar School District share is $991,424.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Goldblow, will we have a vote for her?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 16 is also a roll call motion, that the board of school directors approve the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Special Education Funding and Service Agreement for 2019-2020. Interbar School District share is $363,149.5.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Goldblow, will we have a vote for her?
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Ms. Alonso?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Vericchio?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. And next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 17, that the board of school directors approve the MOU with the DCIU for supplemental services and resources utilized by the Title III Consortium during the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
What is exactly the MOU?
Is with the DCIU for supplemental services and resources utilized by Title III. But that's all I know of.
So, we go to the IU and they provide support for our students who receive LLL, ELL services. So, by going with the consortium, we do get better prices, better, better prices for services, and they do provide all the testing materials, among other things. So, pretty much the majority of school districts in the county are a part of the consortium for ELL services for students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 18, that the board of school directors approve the athletic trainer agreement between Interbar School District and Prospect Health Access Network for a term of three years, July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2022, at a cost of $32,000 per year to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 19, that the board of school directors approve the sports medicine agreement between Interbar School District and the Prospect Health Access Network for a term of three years, July 1st to 2019 to June 30th, 2022, at a cost of $21,289.60 per year to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 20, that the board of school directors approve the reimbursement to Bernadette Riley for her attendance at the annual Pasco Conference and Seminar in Hershey, Pennsylvania on March 5th to March 8th, 2019, at a cost of $131.12 to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Myself, I'm glad to see our superintendent taking advantage of these different seminars and stuff, as well as any of our administration, because it, it shows their concern and their efforts into this district to better themselves and make themselves more aware of the difficulties that we face. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 21, that the board of school directors approve Edward Harris, Jennifer Vericchio, Justin Chabon, and Bernadette Riley to attend the annual NSBA conference in Philadelphia, PA, from March 30th to March 31st, 2019, at a cost not to exceed $2,300 to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved in second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Moving on, do we have any all business? Hearing none. No business. And moving on to our assistant superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. First, I would like to recognize the high school and the student council, students who put together the Region J Conference that was held on March 15th. I had the honor of opening the day, and I could not have been more impressed with our students and the manner in which they presented themselves for that day. It was a wonderful event. We had a number of students who were there from other schools. It was just a really great day for our students, and I was glad to have an opportunity to be a part of it. I would like to especially recognize Andy Castanzo, who happens to be here tonight, and Roseanne McHale, who led the charge with this. When Andy came to me November, Andy, we started talking about this, and he asked if we would be interested in hosting it. I absolutely went down that, turned down that opportunity. That was easy for me to say, because there wasn't much I needed to do. But for Andy, this, and Roseanne, this was a huge undertaking, and it was just a great day. And Andy, I know that isn't the first time you've put that together. I think it was, what, 10 years ago that you did it? But it was just a great day, and I'm glad we were able to participate, and thank you for all the time you put into it. I, I know our students appreciated it. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Now, I just want to point out that 10 years ago, the president of student council is sitting next to you.
Right. That's right.
It was, thank you, yeah.
So, well, it was a great day. Interbar Theater production of the Elvis Presley-inspired All Shook Up is opening on Thursday, March 28th, with 7 o'clock performance. There is also a show on Friday, March 29th at 7:00, and two shows on Saturday, March 30th at 2:00 at 7:00 PM. Tickets are available for purchase online or at the door. The cost is $10 for adults and eight for students or senior citizens. There will be concessions and raffle baskets, including a $40 gift basket. So, if you have the time, please go and see the show. Our theater productions and our group have really worked hard, and I know it's going to be a great show, so I'm really looking forward to seeing it. Anyone that needs more information, please visit the website at wwwinterbartheater.com for more information. On Thursday, April 11th, from 4 to 6, the district will be hosting the pre-K literacy fair at the kindergarten academy. All children ages 3 to 5 not yet attending the kindergarten academy and reside in the district are invited to attend with a parent or guardian. This year, each family will receive a free copy of Barnyard Banter by Denise Fleming, which is the P.A. one book every child selection. Also information on the website if needed. We are also accepting pre-K registration pa, or, we are accepting registration for pre-K for the 2019-2020 school year. All students must be turning for by September 1st, live in the district, and be approved based on the requirements of the pre-K count grant. Parents can stop by the registration office or, again, visit the website. And finally, I would like to thank the IEA, PSEA, and Chartwells for partnering with us to provide all interested students in the district with a free breakfast on March 6th. We had over 600 students participate that day, and it was great to see a lot of our teachers, many of our board members were there, and we also were joined by local legislator, Senator Kearney, and Representative DeLoso. So, it was a very positive event, and hopefully, we can turn it into something that happens annually. And because of that, we had over 80 students attend breakfast at the kindergarten. So, Mr. High School and I had a meeting, and we are looking into possibly being able to provide breakfast at the kindergarten academy. So, we're looking into that, and hopefully, that's something we'll be able to do. So, it was a great event, and again, I hope we're able to continue to offer that to our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there any comments from the board? Mr. Harris?
Yes, I would like to, on behalf of the board, wish Ms. Alonso a happy birthday.
It's my birthday.
You're 21 now. So, but anyway, a happy birthday from the board.
Comment? Just wanted to, I guess, circle back to the negotiations and the unions, collective bargaining unions and whatnot. In my, this is my second term on the board, I guess about, just about six years. In my six years on the board, I've witnessed this board work collegially to get and retain the best employees, the best superintendent, and we've, we've already shown a confidence vote in the current superintendent by way of already approving a motion to retain the current superintendent for three to five years. Rather than focus on the sins of the past, or the perceived sins of the past, or, I would like the board, and I, I know the board focuses on the positive contributions of the current superintendent and how she has managed to move the district forward along with getting and keeping a strong administrative staff as well. So, that being said, we are in negotiations. I, without talking about any details, I have full confidence in this board in managing to progress all these different negotiations to fruition. I don't have any doubt that we'll complete our negotiations at least as quickly as we can, and at least as quickly as the collective bargaining agreement, the collective bargaining units will allow us. But at the same time, we have to maintain our fiduciary responsibility to the community and taxpayers. So, we will work together with those collective bargaining units to get the, the best people, the best contract for as long as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. And I just want to clarify, as Mr. Evans asked me, who is on the negotiating team, everything is negotiated by the entire board. I am just a representative of the board, just to bring back the material that is going over, but it is brought to the entire board. The entire board discusses it in executive sessions and makes, and clarifies what they want to bring back to whatever, whoever we're dealing with or negotiating with. But as Mr. Evans stated, we do no negotiating in that room by ourselves. Everything is in front of this entire room. So...
Well, to clarify, we don't need to speak in the negotiation session. We can only report back to the, to the board as a whole.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none. On Monday, April 1st, 2019, a finance committee meeting, a GBO meeting immediately following will be held at 7:00 PM in the boardroom of the administration board. The next work session of the Interbar Board School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the administration room on Monday, April 8th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interbar Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the administration room on Wednesday, April 10th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.